So the first item is to talk about the budget amendment twenty four twenty five, um, the budget packet. And we'll see on page three, the general fund. Back to page three, the food service fund. Page four is the student slash school activity fund. On each of these fifth columns, we have last year's actual and column for what we proposed a year ago in June twenty twenty four, or amended for this year, and then are proposed for twenty five twenty six, and that's the same, um, structure for each resolution that we have in here. So I'll start with twenty four twenty five, um, for both, you know, for all three funds. General fund is the one that is the most involved. We'll see that there are some, some big changes, not so much in revenue, interesting the changes there. Last year, we amended the budget, or we had a budget proposal, and then the legislature came in and did all sorts of rules and things, and did not get a per pupil increase, and we had budgets along that. Um, and then the flip side was they did some things with the revenue, which does relate to the expense side. The other thing with that is, um, grants, you know, as grants come in in the middle of some of the year, sometimes grants are multi-year, and so it's just when are we going to spend on that fluctuate? I know that was a small change over the last three, actually did have some spending this this year, tried to wrap it up last this year. So expenditures are lower than projected from your original budget. Um, we'll see that revenues are, you know, roughly the same, not exactly, but they're, they're really in line. Um, and so we're actually going to be seeing an operating surplus of four hundred and five thousand two hundred and six dollars to be adding to fund balance. So you'll see that fund balance is projected to come in at, I don't know, three point nine million, just three million nine hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. So still see that committed fund balance of seventy five thousand. Davis was talking about this at the end of the last board meeting, it's not what we'll do with this where you see it. Well, this is where you see it, it's pretty much on paper, but it is board action. And I left it in there for this time because we haven't talked about it and went out. Um, the fund balance is being as high as it is right now. It probably isn't necessary to have that there because we could have a slew of teachers retired, and we could owe payouts, and our fund balance couldn't even exist. Um, so it's really your pleasure if moving forward, like in the next amendment, if you want to take it out, it's a small number. It doesn't hurt to keep it there either. So it really is, I mean, it's, it's basically what happened to us. You know, it made sense when we could afford to do it. So I have no problem keeping it there, and I really don't have a recommendation one way or the other. Um, I just want to point out that it is still there as a board committed fund balance to be, uh, we're kind of swirling that away. For if anybody's to retire, we wanted to make sure that we get our those payouts, and we did this back when we were just trying to get enough, you know, we had like a hundred thousand in the balance at that time, so we just wanted to make sure that that was secure. And then in food service, there's not a whole lot to talk about in food service. You know, the revenue is just slightly under, and this is just go standard in most sort of, um, at the time. That's in the summer program as well as during the school year. Um, on the expense side, you see some slight changes there. It's really not, not that much. Uh, in this case, we're looking to have an operational deficit of about twenty four thousand dollars. It's not concerning because we have for, I'm gonna say probably about five years, comparing the fund balance, it's typically higher than the state will allow, like this level of program will allow. Um, that's all because of the COVID funding. And so we were not in jeopardy of having it removed, but we would get an email every year, gotta spend a sale, spend a sale. It's like, no, I would joke in the email, we didn't say, okay, lobster and steak for lunch, you know, really? And so we had, you know, the tour equipment, the new steamers, and then we invested back into the program. So having a small, uh, operational deficit is fine in toward the end. And I think I, you know, we did, um, we're allowed to keep, uh, three months, like that essentially. And so this year and next year, we'll, we'll regular to meet, so let's go to that. And then again, for this year, this student activities fund, this is all of our, you know, required by law. GASB a few years ago required this, would board, uh, adopt some budgets. Uh, but this is really all student activity, expenditures just follow. There's no general fund money that goes into this fund. So all of the revenue comes from fundraisers, donations, you know, maybe some small grants that a student might write or put part of. That is what's in there. And so really, this is just us trying to track what has actually happened in the year, and so that's what we do the amendment for. And then we just say, well, it's the savings we have in next year, and we just have to roll with it. So this one is quite frankly the least important out of all of them, but it's really, it's just a check box. Do you want to, do you want me to take any questions now, since, or do you want to do it when there's, when the motion is on? It doesn't matter to me.
Best to do it now.
Okay.
We've got time.
Was there anything with twenty four twenty five and the next one? Questions? Good? You're good, okay. So we'll move on to the twenty five twenty six. Um, if anybody has been reading their emails from MASV about what's going on in the legislature with, with the budget process right now, will know that there's a lot of, um, chaos, I would say, a little consternation. Uh, you know, being very worried, uh, I remember just wrote an email, I think yesterday or this weekend, we're down in Oakland area, how everybody is talking about their passing budgets, like operational deficits, we don't know what the legislature wants to do. And it's getting the last year, it's a big swing, it's a big bear, and it's the first time we pass a budget. It could be true for us again, um, you know, we've been here before so long, I don't like it. Um, I don't think it's a great way to do business. It's something that we're familiar with, and we'll roll with it, and we'll just keep doing what we do. Um, what I assumed in here was a three hundred and ninety two dollar per pupil increase in state aid. So that brought it up to ten thousand dollars. So that's probably the one thing that is most, was most consistent in all three versions of the budget. So the three versions of the executive, so the governor, and then the senate and the house. They all have a foundation allowance about the same, but everything, everything else around it, that, that was vastly different. Um, and then our state aid enrollment, um, you might remember that every year we do an enrollment study. We paid off with Freddie Mavich, a couple hundred dollars to do an enrollment study for us, to give us enrollment projections. And we use them for budgeting as well as for facilities planning, so the goal purpose is coming really handy for our bond issue. And, um, so we took a look at that, and Dr. Carney and I took a look at that, and we did the formula, and we talked with the crew, and, you know, the number that we came up with was right in line, and it is quite concerning, it is concerning. So if there's any hope there, you know, that hope is, is we're around, uh, see our student enrollment of, you know, eight hundred and sixty four point nine two. So you could round up to eight sixty five, you know, that, that's what they're saying. And we're at about the eight ninety five, I think, is what that was. Um, so, you know, there's, there's some growth reduction there. So if that doesn't happen, that, that's going to be very good for us. So you know, we always go conservative, nothing's changed without as well. Um, but I've said this probably every single time, but when you lose that high year, you know, even let's just say for instance, you might physically only lose ten students, but because of this three-year averaging, when you lose a high year, it might feel like in revenue, that revenue drop might be more like twenty students. Okay, so this is where the three-year average is great every year, because you are getting paid on more kids than you actually have in seats. But year to year, you're really feeling that they were a pain, okay? So there's, there's goods and bads with that. Um, so you see in here, we're gonna feel that decrease about thirty nine pupils. Um, so then this net effect of this, of the increase is really gonna keep a decrease of about nineteen thousand dollars. So all of that increase in per pupil funding is essentially just gonna get wiped out by decline. And so that's in the simplest form, right? You just think about it, you're really not getting any more revenue, but you're going to have an increase in expenditures, right? But that's just the way it is, people expected their raises, inflation is what it is, like you're, you're not gonna keep people around. So expenses are going to go up, and so you're, you're gonna see that in here. Um, there was a few other, other small things in here, uh, you know, the small special ed funding here in Marie's, so that's fifty five thousand. We'll get that updated for the board, we'll change it for our website, because there's a zero missing. But overall, net revenue is gonna go down about thirty thousand dollars, is what I'm expecting over this year right here. And then on the flip side, we're gonna have an increase in expenditures, and this is all staff and salary. It's about eight hundred and sixty thousand, so you've got all your teachers, like your hourly, like the teachers. Um, guess what, principal, superintendent, schedule B. Schedule B has not been increased for a few years, I wanna say many, um, which I think at one point athletics was, but then the clubs weren't. So the clubs might not have been increased since the twenty twenty one timeframe. So it's, it's, it's time to do this, and so you'll see that in a more action than the regular, um, meeting. And the goal there is to actually use the BA step zero from this fiscal year as the basis for next year. So we can still be one year behind, okay? We can still be one year behind if the goal was to match BA step zero as its basis. We're both the GPA and schedule B. Um, they're not required to match because schedule B has disassociated from the master contract. So, um, we just have to, you know, run things by the, kind of states that in there, plus common jersey. We did reach out to them, they're good too. Um, non-bargaining is also in report happening tonight for a group of three percent jumps in there. We're also adding back that SCTE teachers, we're very happy for that. Um, we need some district, uh, district-wide nurse, just a couple days a week, but a slight increase in that. We're contracting that out through releases this year, and they have a grant to help us out with that, that is no longer. Uh, insurance is about a three percent increase, and there's some savings. Did have some decreases then, uh, social studies curriculum, except you all were talking about tonight.
Yep.
Yep, we're going, yep, so social studies curriculum is gonna cost less than the MEA curriculum, so there's savings there. And then also on the bus and student transportation vehicles. So this is, this was a fun one to see. Um, this year, PJ and I wrote some grants, PJ did one, and then we did one together. So between the two, we got eighty seven thousand eight, eighty seven thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars in grants for buses, for A bus, okay? So this fiscal year, we bought a bus without a grant, plus we bought a special ed, we did a lot of sixteen thousand dollars. So we spent over two, just over two hundred thousand dollars on, it's like I call it student transportation. Next year, we're going to have a bus, a, a bus, but then we take those grants off, and then we also will need to purchase a new truck, a service truck, and a plow with a mountain. So we're really going to, uh, still have some savings overall from last year. So that's great, because that offsets some of that, those other expenditures. Um, and we'll still get a service truck added, and then writing those grants to its loud public. So that was nice to see that. Um, and then we're expecting to see this fund balance then for next year. Um, we're looking at it being about three point six million dollars, three million six hundred and eleven hundred and seventy seven. Because it is, you know, we are showing an operating deficit in sure three point four thousand. Um, when we get to amendment time, I wouldn't be surprised if that looks better. I would, I would, I would expect it to look, to look better. We shall see how the budget actually plays out with the legislative portion of that. Um, and what that is, twenty two point six five percent of fund balance. So we're, we're still in a good spot, we're not borrowing, we're nowhere near needing to borrow cash flow purposes, so that part is good. Quickly then for, um, on the food service fund, nothing is standing out there. We just took a look at, um, did some nominal increases, uh, across the board, and, and that's, that's a two percent increases, that's nice. And in the school, the student school activity fund is just, you know, we're still up in the series right now, and we're letting it happen. And so I know that there's no action during this meeting, until the end of next year. Um, so are there any questions or discussions?
How are we, or how are, how are you?
Well. Well, TJ.
How are you doing? Uh, no, how are, how are we, like, accounting for, like, the legislature's switch from categoricals to just increasing the per pupil?
Okay. Cause like, I'm, I'm trying to read your lips here, cause I got a fan over here. So your hand was like right there, so how are we accounting for?
Uh, the change from categoricals to just increasing the per pupil.
So the house version?
The house version, yeah.
So I'm not accounting for it yet, because it's not a done deal. Um, it's interesting, I would say, uh, when I look at the district by district impact, they show the house, the fiscal agency shows us being a big winner in this, because it's really not a change to foundational allowance, it's, it's another categorical, but it's one big categorical. Since a whole bunch of littles rule it up to one big one. Uh, but they tied some strings to it, which I don't think we'll have an issue with it, but it's definitely political. Um, and that it would show us being a winner. So it's just, but it's not, it's not truly foundational. It's, it's a categorical that they're, that they're saying is equivalent to X amount per pupil. But it's not, it is not foundational allowance. So, so that, that's the interesting piece, is that, you know, foundational allowance typically, and they have to do something where we have had erations before, where foundations reduce, but that was one of the big arguments last year. They did it, give some foundational allowance, increase revenue, and they did an expense workaround. So that's great, but what we've done is not have a thing to suck. So when we get an increase next year, if you don't do any, if you don't continue on that expense decrease, it, it, it just, it doesn't work out, like, we're playing with it, we're playing with this, and that's what they're doing for the end. So it'll, it'll, it will be interesting to see how this all, you know, shakes out. Uh, I think in general, the community, the school community is not like, it, it's like, then put it in foundational, right? Don't put it in another categorical and pledge to have X, Y, and Z to do this, and, you know, you can't have bathrooms that look a certain way. And, you know, that's, you know, that's the same.
Yeah.
Tying that into that, so that's really, you know, but that's what a board wants to do. Okay, fine, that's a board, but they're now making a statement for that. So it'll be interesting to see how this all plays out. Governor Carney?
No.
You don't have a word? That's, that's all that I would have, then as far as the presentation for this, for all of this, the portion for me.
Okay.
So we're clear to move ahead to public comment? I don't see here, here any interest in public comment, so we're gonna adjourn at five fifty five. We'll start the, this will be about five minutes.
Yep.
When we get to, uh, PJ's items, I've got, I've got. How is Amy?
Uh, she's not impatient at all.
You went through this.
Yeah. You know, a week or so ago, I left her with a five gallon jug of water, and some flip bars in the litter box, and it was awesome, so. So, yeah. She survived, so. Lucas was home first.
Oh, Lucas was.
I know.
Soul raised him. He needed you to raise him. I thought he was like a patient today, because he was, it was her last day, and I had a chance to see her for the first time, and he was patient.
He's a good kid.
Yeah.
Nope, no interest. Not at all.
Someone will snatch in.
All the girls are already whispering that he's back. I think he's a blimp, he kind of like.
Let's just stay for a stand.
Please hang around with, um, Thomas, just graduate. Uh, to be in, uh, Vanderjaid. And then Spain. Maya Scheffel, TJ's daughter.
Yeah.
All really good kids. Looked back laughing, they've been to our house, you know, they've all been to our house. Have fires, and they're all hitting the volleyball around the second floor, so we need to go buy a volleyball, but I don't, he's like, yeah, cool.
But once you've got it, you've got it.
So I mean, like last night, he asked me, you know, play tennis, dunk, play tennis. I was hanging out with my, he said, hey, can you have a fire at the house today? I'm like, oh, cause I'm at work, I'm at work for the next twenty days, nineteen days straight. In fact, I got forced to, I think, so I'm happy with that. I said, no, cause we're kinda staying in winter. Fine, you guys, midnight, you know, twelve thirty, you're like, oh, you really have a curse? Never really talked about it. Never talked about it, so we got home, we got home before I did last night. We got home at one, you know, dude, we didn't talk about Kirk. It's not that I don't trust you, you're making good decisions, and you're hanging out with good kids, but we need to have some kind of baseline here.
Hard parts. Yeah, yeah, but yeah, I mean, you hear about that, it's about that exploration. So for us, it's. Oh. You know, like, she, she sounds like, like, they're checking for something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know.
But pretty much relations are there, and you've got, uh, Jim Potter. He'll burst into a conversation. Okay, that's what your PJ question was, is it clean or not? You know, you said something to, uh, seemed to have a, you know, shift the drop. You know, no. You don't.
That's a little closer into the horseshoe. Yeah. Right.
That's six oh one.
Okay. I could hit the gavel.
You could, but you don't want to do that.
I haven't, we did the little gavel hitter thing.
Yes, we did the gavel hitter thing.
That's the hitter thing, though, we think we hit the hitter hitter.
Right, right.
We've never had one.
Oh, you've never ever?
No, we've had the gavel, but we've never had it. It's more, I think, just ceremonial.
All right, follow the, next meeting order at six oh two, if we could stand for the pledge allegiance, please. Flag in order. Way back there.
Oh.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I need approval of the minutes from last board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The opposed, none heard. Um, I will need an approval of the agenda with the addition of item ten C's and Charles three.
I make motion to approve the agenda, the agenda addition.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The opposed, none heard. Uh, moving on to public comment, is there any public comment for the agenda items? I don't see here, here any interest in public comment, so we'll move on to the financial report.
We have to check for, we have to check for, I, it starts on page twelve, and so I'm making sure you can see our board structures. And there's a few qualities. So, uh, I have the board of group, the main accounts payable, which is one hundred and seven thousand two hundred and seventy six dollars and ninety six cents.
Get a motion?
Motion to approve on the head register, uh, five oh one seven. That was three hundred and seventy six dollars and ninety six cents.
Level second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The opposed, none heard, financial report?
Uh, I'd like to let you all know that that, uh, that was October, November, this is in here, and opportunity, you know, our sinking fund, uh, has quite, you know, a nice balance in it. Where is that, in the report, right? Thinking, it's between the rate. So, you know, how many well over five hundred thousand dollars, and, uh, you know, interest rates sitting in a bank, um, is quite low. Well, I'll help you get my own checking account, or I'm saving accounts, it's a business. So we are allowed by law to invest, and we should use various instruments, one of them is commercial paper. So I reached out to our representative, and I took a bank, that's the bank that we did investments in for commercial paper. Um, it was a seven month investment, we made four and a half percent on that. So we made, uh, roughly, you know, close to eighteen thousand dollars on that. So over seven months, if we would have just left it in the bank, probably would have made it almost eighteen, nine hundred dollars a month in those seven months. Um, and so this was definitely, you know, worth double. And so that's great, and so that then came due in May, and so then we reinvested, and we reinvested. This time it was only six months, still got four and a half percent, four point five, two percent. Um, did a little bit of a lower amount though, right? And we did spend it seven hundred thousand more, and six hundred thousand this time. And so again, in this commercial paper, kind of think of it like a C, right? Uh, so we made a positive, so this money is, we have a penalty, so it's, it's tied up. That's to get maybe four and a half percent, so it's tied up, so this is why I didn't use the whole amount. So when I was thinking about five hundred thousand dollars, I still did save in checking. Um, so that if anything did come out, it would be expensive, and we could have that. So it's just a balance approach. So we'll make another fourteen thousand for that. So over these, you know, thirteen months, we're going to make about thirty thousand, about thirty thousand dollars, with over a thousand dollars in interest. Um, and so that's our sinking fund, so obviously, the bill rates go back to the sinking fund. So as much as our sinking fund is over, we're not getting any revenue. That's where you might not see, you know, you might see that revenue actually does tick up a little bit, is that interest coming in that. Okay? Stay still on that. That's all I have.
We can, but apparently out, on the.
We can, but apparently out, out the rest of the world can't, isn't getting any audio from the meeting right now.
Zach, is there anything that we can do to have our audio come back again?
Audio out completely, or is it just?
Message I got sent out completely.
Oh, okay.
So.
It happens a lot. Feel free, if there's anything you can do to bring the sound back, we, you just got a message saying that the audio was out.
I can give you the audio off my end.
Okay. We may need to.
I don't know, it was working, it was better, I guess, it was reported to be that it was better when it was moved, the mics were moved, but then it went completely out after that, so it wasn't that they were moved, the moving, the moving of them made it better, but then it's since gone out, so.
I'll send you the soundtrack, you can lay it.
We'll lay that over now.
Lay it over the other, okay.
So, I guess we'll figure that out at another date. Um.
Do we need to adopt the budget?
Yep, yep.
Um. So sometimes you have done, someone wants to make a motion, sometimes you've done the general fund, and you've done twenty-four, twenty-five amended, twenty-five, twenty-six for next year, then you've done three separate motions by fund. Sometimes you've done twenty-four, twenty-five, you know, amended for all three funds in your motion, and then the twenty-five, twenty-six of all three funds are separate, so it's really up to you how you do it, you could do it all in one motion as well, so just, there's options there for you, um, that the resolution is written in.
Does it matter to you?
Um, I think it's clear we do all three for the twenty-four, twenty-five one motion.
Yes.
Agreed.
Okay. Somebody even want to make that motion?
I will make the motion.
Okay, I wasn't looking at it specifically.
Well, you are, he's our treasurer, so.
Yeah.
Um, to it, however, that we accept all, who agree amendment is for twenty-four, twenty-five.
And if he's right, I'll second it.
General fund, food service fund, and student activity fund.
I will second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed, none heard. Adopt twenty-five, twenty-six, general fund, food service, and student activity budget.
Make a motion to accept twenty-five, twenty-six, general.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed, none heard. Move on to information?
Kimberly? Come on up. Hey, Kimberly!
Let's go in front of the camera, which means we're putting this right here.
Ms. Kimberly Haflin has been named the GACS twenty-four, twenty-five Teamster of the Year. We are so fortunate to have her, Ms. Kimberly, on staff, she embodies integrity, and loyalty, kindness, and joy. And we appreciate her dedication to the students and staff who serves on a daily basis at Gilbert Elementary School. Colleagues who nominated Kimberly for this honor said the following. Kimberly exemplifies definition of Teamster of the Year. She's dedicated, hardworking, and always willing to lend a hand. She loves to share her hobbies with all, whether it be gardening, or her love of animals. Kimberly always has a great attitude, even in high stress situations. Kimberly is the reason I even know about the Teamster Union. She is an amazing leader, strong, yet someone you're comfortable talking to about anything. By the action of the Gwynne Area Community School Board of Education, this Teamster of the Year award is presented this ninth day of May. Couldn't make it that day, so we're doing it now, twenty-third of June, um, to Kimberly Haflin, in recognition of your hard work, outstanding achievement, and dedication to the Gwynne community. Appreciate it.
Um, do we?
Local scholarships.
Yeah, do you, are we gonna? Give any shout outs to any of this, or?
Um, no, I need to quickly do this, your name.
Okay.
Um, just show us all different local scholarships that the class of twenty twenty-five received, the award and their scholarships, and the total monetary was thirty-three thousand, hundred dollars for our students.
Do we communicate it out loud to the community, or?
The, the organizations already know, they, they have their.
Right, because we have the awards ceremony, okay.
The award saying that, May, um, this is just an FYI for the award.
Okay.
That they can see which scholarships are available, which are available to our students and how much they're going to pay.
Okay.
And that class was in a pretty amazing class, so a pretty, uh, tight race for the top, you know, for valedictorian and stuff, so.
Seeking.
Yeah.
All right, sinking fund update from PJ, uh, O'Brien. No current sinking fund projects underway, obtaining quotes to fix the asphalt road going to the parking lot behind the building. The increased bus traffic is accelerating the collapse of the road at two points, creating potholes that are feet across now and half foot deep. Cost will determine if I act on it. Bill, can I go on to building and grounds?
No.
Okay, uh, building and grounds, building reset is ongoing and is staying on schedule. Transportation, Pete is settling in and will begin taking over tasks during summer. Uh, bond project summary. Do we have a better spot for that?
Yeah.
Is the department updates, okay, I'll wait on that one. Okay. Where were all the potholes?
Is that behind the building?
Right, you, you didn't.
It's not doing that, so, do you have a sharp burn, any, it's not big.
Clarification on that, that's the impression I had. Cause I was thinking what mine was thinking with that, but that's township roadway. Right. At a bus garage. I think it's. And then shoot an email out. Okay, thank you.
Um, strategic plan, the MTSS update?
Yes, we have our principals here to report on that, you have Jenny Palmer, does a lovely job of putting together the data. Uh, you could look to MTSS, your board goals are within that, uh, what's going well in Gwynn, as we reflect on the end of another school year, we can highlight and celebrate what is going well in each domain. The MTSS team met for one last time in April to revisit progress on initiatives, as well as brainstorm new strategies and programs to implement for the school year of twenty-five, twenty-six. I did not think attendance, discipline, uh, student achievement would be goals that you're, uh, bailing on, I think you're moving forward on those as well. Uh, so what's going well, offering online hybrid programming, Gwynn is expanding the use of online platform, edgenuity to even more students, supporting with initial credits, credit recovery, and honors courses. Uh, the goal is to pull back fifteen students that were trying to open and roll out using, uh, link, uh. Link learning, they're using edgenuity, so instead, we went ahead, Jenny did the research, and there's no reason why we can't purchase those subscriptions and pull those back in. Low class sizes at the elementary level, teachers and intervention groups being able to pinpoint student needs are the reason that we're seeing a lot of academ- academic gains. I want to do a shout out here to Stephanie Abada, her position is helping us target what we call the bubble students, those students who, with extra interventions, which have been worked into the schedule, Marcy has intervention times. And utilizing the fact that these are the names of those students that are on the bubble, and how can we assist them to, to make it into proficient? Uh, hundred percent of teachers are returning at KI Sawyer Elementary, isn't that amazing, I mean, you don't have any, uh, attrition, that's, that's exciting, and it's a testament to Marcy. I mean, they don't like administration, that's why another school. Uh, high retention and very little staff turnover across all of Gwynn, but a hundred percent at KI Sawyer. Instructional coach at the elementary level, uh, the implementation of Julie Anderson, allowing her to, uh, be an instructional coach K through five, utilizing hundred percent of title monies to make this happen, if at all possible. Uh, we have to make sure that she is observing the teachers while other Title I students are there, and can then coach as to how are you best meeting those students' needs. And that's one of the ways, in schoolwide, Title I, that we can utilize those funds. So will she not be instructing specifically students? She will not be instructing specific students, the other two teachers will. Okay. Okay, good question. Uh, Saturday school for Gilbert Elementary for students to catch up on mixed work, targeted small group instruction next year by increased intervention time, half the class period in the learning center, targeted small group and individual intervention. And middle school, high school class sizes for learning centers are slated to be smaller next year, adjusting towner time to have more intervention time, and middle school, high school homework help mandatory on Thursdays for students, uh, bailing any classes. And a lot of the work with that is a, uh, trifecta between, uh, Rob and Teresa Vitela and Brad, making sure no one falls through the cracks, and I also credit the fact that we have figured out transportation, there is no reason why those kids. Oh, good, what are we gonna do to help them for transportation? All, we're, we're handling every Thursday, and that's the day. Perfect. Yep, okay, um, eliminate barriers, so on, who's got the math, I know you split things up, somebody has, um, handling questions on math reading, was it?
Well, Dr. Conwy, you are a good one, so that is the first part.
Oh, I'm sorry to steal any thunder.
You did not steal thunder, I.
Okay, okay.
Um, really, if you look, um, you can see that math is doing great, if you look at the top line, that's giving you our growth, um, which is always a key indicator, we don't always have students coming in where we want them to, so making sure that they're making the feelings that you should have made are really, we can really, really important parts, and then that bottom line is your achievement, that's them making it to proficiency. Um, so, uh, overall, you know, it's eight, 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 takes the N R D A, so they're in a seventy-first percent level of growth, so that's huge. Um, and then if you look at that bottom line for achievement, you're seeing that red section, we want that to get smaller, we want one to get smaller, we want those blues and greens to be considered for nice, nice games. Um, if you look at Sawyer, um, kindergarten first and second, you can see that they really rocked it, um, the growth, you know, we're not even, we're not even green, like, um, kindergarten first grade and second grade rocked it, um, that's all people are doing, and, um, after some of the student achievement, well, it's, um. Um, Gilbert did well, is, did well also, as did creates seven and eights, great job of being creative for her, um, especially in achieving, they have that red section for, that's like, you know, that's a big, really long, that's a big question. Um, reading all, or reading overall, excuse me, that's K eights again in that pop box, um, and the fifty-third percentile of growth, so that's a half of our students, um, good game. Um, achievement is distributed, there is average, and you did not convert to fourth, first, and fourth, sixth, again, you can see kindergarten, you can roll in the green, that's amazing, um, first grade rocked it too, even that growth up in the green, and then you can form to yellow, achievement. Second grade did a great job as well, and was everybody up, um, especially if you're looking at that white bar, you can really want that, so we want to see, um, small numbers are working.
Good.
Do you have any questions on, in the board?
I do not, there's the board.
No?
Okay, excellent, focus two, attendance, who's got attendance?
I'm gonna jump in on this one.
Okay.
Um, so, attendance here as a section, um, once again, because we have that huge at-risk population that any and all of our buildings, um, factor in. Our main goal this year was to enhance our strategies, and working with a lot of those at-risk families, so there's four number bullet points there. And it's always important to note that when we're talking absences, we're talking excused absences, as well as unexcused absences, okay, these aren't just factored in with unexcused. Then, another primary focus was continuing, um, some positive initiatives, and you'll see five examples there, that whether it was an elementary or the middle high school here, building, had moves to promote the positive, but also promote incentives to reach goals, exceed prior goals, so on so forth. Um, that second page, I actually wanna note the very first bottom section, though, the Excel light section, and point something out, because with Steph, Steph Abada's help this year, we've been able to calculate these numbers, um, based on what state documents are looking to pull from Power School. And so, what I mean by that is this, if you look at that Excel section, you'll see middle slash high school listed, okay? But you'll notice these numbers, number of students chronically absent, one forty-two, number of students not chronically absent, four sixty-eight, well, when you combine those two numbers, you're basically looking at six hundred. We don't have six hundred students under this rule, but we have to keep in mind now, is Steph has allowed us to incorporate and use her wisdom with how Power School in the state works. Because anytime somebody's on our books for ten or more days, okay, little Johnny might come to us and only be on the books for ten days, and little Susie might show up for the entire school year, somebody else may show up for just ninety-seven days, but anybody who was on our books in twenty-four, twenty-five at any building, okay, for ten or more days, it's factored into these numbers. So that's why you see six hundred instead of this building's four hundred and eighty-some, that our numbers shook out to be this year, okay? So Steph and I sat down, cause I questioned that right away, just to make sure to understand it, to best explain it to you, and so based on those numbers, you'll see the line graphs above, representing all three buildings, and it's very safe to say, attendance continues to be a huge focus of ours, because of the at-risk demographic. We're not only working with the student to try to get them motivated, there's so many times. Okay, yes, yes, there's so many times we're trying to work with that parent, to educate them on the importance. There's so many times we're trying to work with that parent to educate them on the importance of why the consistency of being in the school is so valid. Now Jenny just reminded me, that is an August correct.
The first one is August, the interference and then you have to adapt from their personal.
Yeah, so there's-
Because it's a whole new supply.
Yeah, we have, we have an opportunity now with the local districts, so on so forth. They're putting out, I don't know, a quick word training workshop. But it's an opportunity to, everybody gets together for one face-to-face in August to start once again reevaluating this theme topic and how we can best work with the at-risk, okay? And even the not at-risk. But then there's a follow-up of three different virtuals that we are participating in. So I think the three of us, yep, building attendance support, the three of us were actually signed up already for that that voice. We're forward to gaining more knowledge in just initiatives and systems to work with the at-risk populations. Any questions on the attendance session? Okay, thank you.
So I do have a quick question.
Yeah, question.
Just from the, just so I can understand. We had roughly a hundred students that were in and out?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that, that's another-
Very trans.
Just in the middle high school, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that demographic right there leads to clear evidence of the transient population that we have. And now, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Coney or any of the other administrators at the table, but having, having Steph on board has given us a specific person to track that in and out. And the, the reasonings for the in and out, she was-
Not just the middle school students.
Yes, and she was actually providing that data to us a couple of weeks ago at our admin meeting within the board room there. It was very interesting.
Yeah, just so we weren't like, she's in your field.
Right.
Like, where are all these students going?
Yes.
This many students love to stay, because these students are in another district. These students, like, there's some that we just don't know, some went online. And so she was able to break that down, so we were able to like target, you know, who we need to target. So we're not just like chasing up anonymous a hundred kids or whatever, like in our district.
It's always, it's always been that way in Gwynn, from what I remember growing up.
No, I know, I just never seen the number, like the data, you know? And I think that would be, I think that I as a board member would like to see some of those reasonings as well. And I think the community would like to know too. There's a lot of assumptions out there as to why, where, why that number is so high.
Yeah, I'll make a note of that TJ.
Thank you.
For Dr. Coney and Steph to figure out the appropriate means to get that issue to grasp hands.
Yeah.
Positive behavior interventions and supports, what's going well?
Okay, so I'm gonna talk specifically about one initiative that women participated in as a whole and that was the My Voice Survey. And My Voice Survey is a tool that Michigan schools use to gather feedback from students, teachers, and families about their experiences focusing on certain things such as engagement, belonging, social work and learning. I mean, after everyone took the survey, so are there, I'm sure there's some parents here that are important to recall getting a link about the survey. So it's been out like this hundred and some page report. So, you know, kind of like distilling, you know, what was meaningful information for us and, you know, what we can take and learn from all that data from such a massive survey. But it was really aimed to provide like a holistic view about like just overall student well-being and looking at students' non-academic performance and then just to help continue to improve school. And so looking at the, I guess that's, what's the citation? That's right. August three, we look at social and emotional learning, student engagement, and belonging. And those were some of the positives that students report that staff and other students care about people's feeling, you know, care about each other's feeling. They have a connection with everyone, they're adult in the school. Some of the other higher areas are teachers encouraging students to do their best. And, you know, just that overall trust that the students have with their teachers and in the area of belonging. There wasn't really anything that jumped out, but there was just more of like feedback from students about how this school can like be a place of pride and presence.
And then least restrictive environment, inclusion.
Okay, so-
Jenny can cover that one?
Yep, so least restrictive environment is, you know, how it is stated in the law of IDA that students with disabilities are participating with students with non-beat disabilities to the maximum extent appropriate. And Gwynn does that really well. So at the bottom shows the number of students that have an IEP, school participates with students who don't have IEP, so IEP is a general education. So that's, that's continuing to go well. So how we're supporting this next year is that there's gonna be a co-teaching and inclusion training in the beginning of school year, starting with co-teaching pairs. It doesn't necessarily have to be special education or general education teachers. We wanna bring care professionals into that training as well. Because, you know, it's a misnomer that they know what to do, you know? So making sure that all of that is really explicitly spelled out. Because there is science behind inclusion and co-teaching. Other positive things, like you said, Sawyer's been a full-time special education resource room teacher. Last year they have a time resource room teacher. So it's really gonna increase our opportunities for support and general education cushion. And we're gonna continue doing all of our best practices, training, using our resources at MESA, you know, behavior consultants, autism consultants, so on. And then we have, we have a really robust PACT program, so that's a program for assistant teachers and students. And I need, she can have this conversation about any child, multi-disciplinary teacher. Look at data, do rates from the local life work meetings at the high school, really awesome. And then one really cool thing that I just learned about today at one of my meetings with our transition coach at MESA that I couldn't add to the board practice. Speaking of like least restrictive environment and inclusion, so we have a number of students through the transition program that were able to join the workplace in Gwynn. So some of the businesses in Gwynn have opened their doors to our students with IEP. So shout out to Uporn Lodge, any time business in Gwynn, and Sandy A. Trust that's employing some of our kids this summer through the summer work club. That's huge to have that, to have that apprenticeship to be, you know, have that mentor, mentee experience, you know, during the summer. These summer jobs are really important for our development, so, yeah.
Cool.
It's happening.
Perfect. Professional development days as instructional time.
That's me. Okay, our, our head of MESA wanted us to just hold, just wanted me to just hold this with the board to make sure everybody's on the same page. So we developed our calendar each school year, beginning of the school year for teachers. We have two days back-to-back of full professional development. We offer sketchies that's state continuing education. So that when teachers are reading their certificates, they can use that for that. And we have to have at least seventy-five percent of our teachers in attendance that day be able to use that as a instructional time. We use those as a buffer, we don't use those as actual instructional days in our calendar. We have them as a backup plan in case we come into inclement weather. View our weather this year, we have seven inclement weather days. And we also have that day right before Thanksgiving break where we did not have seventy-five percent attendance because the busing issue was a half-day, blah, blah, blah. So what we, what we did was we went into our reserve bank and we used those two days back in August of last year and compensate for those two days that we were over. We did not then have to ask for labor for an additional, we did the labor for an additional three days of if we got bad weather. So the auditor just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of this, that we did this. And so this, you know, so you can see our email conversation, my, my question to him, his response to me, and then I adjusted the calendar and sent it up to MESA where he goes, so based back in August, it's just an instructional time. Again, we, we don't use it to count it when we go into the year. We use it as a backup and emergency basis only if we need it. And this is exactly why we do it. If anybody questions why we have those days in August and they're counted in our calendar, that's why, because we wanna have that in our back copy.
Yep, okay. This is from PJ Bond Project, summary of the current plan. Reduced rooms per grade from four rooms, per grade to three rooms per grade for the kindergarten through second. We've already had it at three rooms, starting with center schools, four grades, three through five. Moving fifth grade into the middle school instead of building rooms for them. Reduced most internal renovations that involve moving walls inside the middle school, high school. Still renovating the office area to provide sufficient office space for support functions and provide secure entry to the middle school, high school, along with the science rooms and the kitchen. Building a pre-K through fourth school attached to the middle school, high school to create a single building that's one-story. Lapped off quite a bit of funding needed by going to one-story, no elevator needed. And tightening spaces cut off about three point eight million. Initial review of building concept drawings to make sure class and office space numbers are correct. Happened on Thursday afternoon and corrections were sent to engineers and architects to make corrections and sent to the estimators for the cost estimates. We got the design back today. We had a tier two meeting from one-thirty until four-thirty. Said I gotta go, guys, gotta work. But we're on, on track. There's one more question that the group has. And we should get an email from Sean, the architect, by tomorrow in hopes, at least that's what he said, of getting that last question that tier two had ready. We will be ready for a recommendation on the eleventh of-
The seventh.
Seventh, seventh of July.
Yep.
Seventh of July. Okay. Oh, I'm thinking the eleventh of August when our board meeting date changes when we would need the boards calling for the election, that's where I have the-
The seventh will be approval of all my application.
Yes. Okay, so thank you PJ.
Did he say what the question was that they had?
At, at this point, the question might completely disintegrate depending on what the dollar amount is. But the bone of contention is how to, within the confines, make that gym usable for two practices side by side. Right now, it's only one team will be able to practice. Granted, it's one team more than we currently have.
True that.
Yeah. I think that's pretty, pretty much it. Any other, I don't think so, I think that was the main piece on our department's curriculum company.
Do we have a report from the committee?
TJ, you wanna give the report or did you want Anne Marie to summarize for you?
How about I'll try to summarize?
All right, and that you fill in gaps?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Or do you wanna, or do you want to? Okay. All right, so the curriculum committee here, was the committee, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So the committee of staff that met with a couple of different, had a couple of different ideas and bids for, for curriculum for six twelve. And then reported to our curriculum committee about the pros and cons of each of them. Sounds like the best option is through TCI, which is a really, really nice hybrid online and print version. It accommodates a variety of different learning styles and is easily adaptable. And I had no, no issues with it, I thought it was great. Anything else you wanna add to that?
Yep, we were, the committee was really just all of the six twelve social studies teachers. There's not very many of us. So we, we all met with and were unanimously impressed with the TCI representative's presentation. We really, really liked the flexibility that the program offers in the instruction. So every lesson gives three options for instruction. We can do it, there's a reading activity, a hands-on, class-wide learning activity, and then a video activity that presents the same information. One thing that we really liked about that is with our absenteeism. It makes it very easy for teachers to both teach the kids that are in the seats with the best of our ability, but also when those kids return, give them the same lesson in a different format that makes more sense.
And then we're also asking for adoption of the K through five Oakland model with, where you will be doing the instruction on a fully online to all of the elementary teachers. Add consistency is one of the things that I love about that because you will be working with each teacher.
Yeah, so the Oakland program is basically the Oakland Schools ISD put together a social studies curriculum. It's free, it's online, it's approved by MESA. It's, it's robust enough for the standards at the K five level. It is a K twelve program, but the six twelve sections have not been updated in quite some time. Some of them as far back as two thousand and seven. So they're no longer updated enough to meet our current standards. And a lot of the links are broken at that level. There hasn't been any update as to when those programs will be fixed. So that's why we decided it didn't really make sense to stay with that at the six twelve level.
Are we ready for a motion?
I think is that on-
Coming up in the action in a second.
Excellent.
Good, TJ?
Yeah.
All right. Superintendent's report?
You have it, you have it between the bond, the curriculum. The GSRP program is getting up and moving by the next, hopefully the next board meeting as long as all the work is done ahead and the vetting. We'll have a teacher for you and a lead director for the GSRP program. But again, first steps first. Completely excited about the counselor option that Marcy was able to interview as well. So both those important hires will be forthcoming. I, I think we're good. Is there anything else you're in?
Correspondence or anything?
We haven't.
So new business, first item under new business is a change of date for the regular July board meeting.
To the seventh of July.
Is that, okay, so the recommendation is to move the date of the July board meeting to the seventh of July.
That will allow you to only have one meeting.
One.
Because we have to have them on the seventh.
So we get a motion, is there a, could you get a motion to change the date to the seventh of July?
I'll make the motion to change it to the seventh of July. You will?
Six p.m.
You won't be able to make that one, okay.
Okay.
A second.
So discussion, yeah, you're the second. So Brian, you said I could make that date? Okay, does it feel comfortable with us proceeding with the board meeting without you? Okay.
He sits in tier two.
Okay. So it's not like it'll be out of the loop?
No, 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 no.
The meat and potatoes of that meeting, it's just you won't be able to physically be here.
I got my editing swapped for a swap day. See that I can do both?
Gotcha. And now we just flip flopped it, gotcha.
If you flip flop back, they're up there.
So we had a motion to change it to the seventh, we had a second, it changed to the second. Anything more discussion? All in favor?
None.
Aye. Any opposed? None heard. Um, six through twelve, social studies curriculum, uh, we just spoke of that briefly, or had the committee report. Um, I need a motion to consider the purchase of, well, I guess I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion to consider the purchase of TCI six through twelve, social studies curriculum as presented by the curriculum committee.
A second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
All right.
Any opposed? None heard. Um, the M A S B membership, um, can I just continue to make the motion? Unless, unless you want to.
Please.
Okay. Uh, the board will consider the district's membership in the Michigan Association of School Boards from July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-sixth. The copy is enclosed in here. Um, I make the motion to continue our membership with the M A S B.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. M H S A A membership resolution, I will suggest the motion to consider a resolution for membership in the Michigan Association, or Michigan High School Athletic Association from August first, twenty twenty-five through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-sixth.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
All right.
Anything opposed? None heard. Um, personnel, uh, non-bargaining unit salaries, um, find them on page thirty-two. Um, I need, I will need a motion to accept their, um, three percent pay raise for the non-bargaining staff rate of pay. Unless someone else make that motion.
I'll make a motion to, like, uh, approve the three percent raise for non-bargaining unit employees.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None heard. Uh, you'll find Schedule B salaries, page thirty-three through thirty-six. Um, I need a motion to consider the raises for the Schedule B employees, including athletic coaches.
I'll make a motion to accept the raises for Schedule B employees, including athletic coaches.
A second.
Any discussion?
I do, just real quick, I do think that this should be, um, explored a little bit more for next year. But I'm willing to vote on this one this time.
Next word, what do you want, why?
For next year?
Yeah, I mean, I just don't want-
The next budget year?
Oh, next budget year, yeah. Uh, I just, I just want to reassess the, um, salaries.
Is it matching the job?
Is it matching the job?
Thank you. Because I would second that if it was emotional.
(laughing). So we did get a second on there, correct?
Yeah.
I think so.
My second.
Okay. Um, we had discussions, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Um, I can take the resignations all as one.
Yes.
Um, so I make the, a motion, um, for resignations, that we accept the resignation of Samuel Galvin, special ed teacher, Gwynne Middle High School, effective date of resignation, June sixth, twenty twenty-five. Oh, here we go. Emilio, Emily.
Formolo.
Formolo Carrier, counselor, K I S R Elementary School, effective date of resignation, last day of the twenty-four, twenty-five contract year. And Tiana Taylor, parapro, K I S R Elementary School, effective date of resignation, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. So you have a second.
Can we just add Libby's?
Oh, yeah, we do. Um, then the addition to our agenda, um, accept the resignation of Libby Donie, health and P E teacher, Gwynne Middle High School, effective date of resignation, end of the twenty-four, twenty-five contract year. So you have a second.
A second.
Any discussion? Other than we, you know, hate to see people leave and hate to lose people, um, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None heard. Um, I will go through, we could take gifts and donations as one.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so gifts and donations. Um, Claudia Chavez Rhodes, correct? Five hundred dollar donation to the G H S Quiz Bowl team. Um, donors choose, donations to Gwynne Middle High School as listed below. Vertical Thinking Equals Visible Learning Project valued at four hundred and thirty dollars donated to Mrs. Henry's classroom. MacBook Air to Inspire and Share Project valued at one thousand, one hundred and nine dollars. And a Great Gatsby Centennial Celebration Project valued at four hundred and sixty-eight dollars donated to Mrs. Holland's classroom. The Lost Art of Letter Writing Project valued at three hundred and forty-three dollars donated to Mrs. Waldo's classroom. Um, the Market Health Department, two hundred and fifty dollars to purchase prize vouchers for students who participate in mental health month activities donated to the Gwynne Middle High School. And Jill Lemire? Okay. Hundred dollar donation to the Gwynne High School Quiz Bowl team. So I need a motion to accept, or accept a second motion, second motion, sorry.
A second, we forgot the two.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None heard. Um, so at this time, I asked, we'll need a roll call vote to go to closed session for purpose of negotiations.
If you maybe want to do a public comment before it's-
Sure.
Sure.
So I want to jump ahead, is there any public comment on the board meeting tonight?
Would that, sir?
Is there any public comment? Um, do you wish to make any public comment from the meeting tonight?
My name is Steve Thor, I just live up the hill. And, uh, one thing I've noticed, and this has gone on for in excess of twenty-eight years, school has made a mess and they need it. The hill joining the parking lot has not been addressed in years. There is times where the fall, it, there's places where it drops off like this. And I tried to keep mine, the area clean by mine, but it's no longer safe for me to do that. The, uh, twenty-eight years ago, when they had a football team go to district, it tore out the gates in the back next to the tennis courts, never put in that, but they tore up the land there. And what this has done is this has made a, uh, ability for the students to go up through the properties and continually, uh, make noise and, uh, and icy being unsafe, just like the two sheds here next to the, uh, uh, middle school doors. That is a accident waiting to happen. All something we would have to do is put a pond in it and you take out your whole middle school. And, uh, I, I understand there's been problems with cutting the grass, but that grass, if you're not going to cut it, you're going to need the fence because you have, uh, uh, all those nice little critters that'll come up and bite all those students. And guess what? They're sick. And right now, the grass is about this tall, but getting, getting towards, uh, fall time, it's going to be about that tall.
This is in the hill, uh, on the side of the football field, between the residents there?
Well, it's-
In that area?
Along Pierce Street?
The, the parking lot.
Okay.
And I, I live right at the corner of the parking lot and the tennis courts. And, uh, one of the things I've noticed, and I don't know if you realize this, but since they use that for a parking area, that's open carry for guns. Because when you have a concealed weapons permit, you, anywhere where you park, your parking lot, you can carry a, uh, weapon on school grounds. I would never carry mine. I don't think that that's proper, but it needs to be something considered, you know, where, uh, this, through all these exercises, we've had people parking all over the school grounds. And like I say, anywhere that is a parking lot, technically, as far as I need to, need to, uh, concealed carry, you can carry a gun. I've seen O R Bs come in with, uh, gun cases strapped to it, especially going down, uh, between the football field and the hill.
Okay.
And, uh, I don't know if you, people are aware of it, but, uh, the flagpole doesn't have a light on it. Anytime that flag is up, there'd be a light on it. And it was really prevalent, especially when they had Guess An Actor and all these other people. They had their, uh, all their flags unstuck and they've had athletic events. You, I, I look at the flag and, uh, there's no light on it after dark.
Okay.
Most of the time, they take it down, a lot of times they don't.
Thank you, sir.
No, I, I, I've tried to talk to people about this without getting, uh, interrupting, uh, but, uh, I, I really feel it's important, safety of our kids. Of course, my kids are, uh, well, and some are U K kids, but, uh, I, I still like to watch all the little munchkins and, uh, because I know coming through, coming through, uh, my neighbor's yard, uh, every morning, we've got, even now, during the summertime, we've got people making noise, they walk in right past where they- You know, I'd like to see the fence go back up or, because I know you can't afford to put a fence all the way along the property. And it, it, it's things to consider, you know? Most of it's not expensive, it's, it kind of gets lost with all the other important things.
We appreciate you bringing it up, thank you.
Would you be so kind as to fill out the Goldenrod Form with just your name and address and telephone number and hand it to me? I would appreciate-
That way we can follow up with it.
Right, then we could follow up.
Do you do it or not, ma'am? I did call you up.
You called me up and I, did I send you to PJ?
Nope.
Okay, and so obviously you were satisfied with PJ, so now it's me.
Well, I, it, it, it was, it was done back in the, uh, uh, spring, uh, when you, after you first got here.
In twenty twenty-three, so it'd be twenty twenty-four spring, but now that you didn't get your resolution, now it moves on to me.
Well, that, 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 that's, that's why I, I would rather say something and, uh, so it doesn't get lost. Like I say, I like kids taking care of us.
Right, right. Uh, thank you, Rob, he set the-
I, I placed one right there for you, so I can put it in as well, so you didn't have to go searching for it.
Are we leaving this room to do a closed session or are we just turning everything off and what are we doing? What's that? Do we, can we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Oh, yeah, that's right. Uh, make a motion to go to closed session?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, oh, are we doing yes here? Yes. Ryan?
He's going to say yes.
You have to say yes first.
Yes, okay, thank you. We don't have to, you can say no.
Yeah.
But you just gave me a rest. We need something. Sorry. Kind of got sidetracked on the roll call vote. But are the all of them on?
Thanks, Ms. Wellman. Thank the team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Way to go, Kimberly, I love it. Under stressful situations, that's rocking it, I'm telling you.
He's filling out his thing in a minute.
Thank you, principals, you're free.
I'm going to fill this up real quick.